Good morning, council.
Morning.
As you know, my name is Esther Cambough. I'm the general manager for Planning and Community Services. Today, I'm here with you to start your first MPC meeting of the next four years for you guys. So as such, as we do not have a chair at this point, I will call the meeting to order at this time at 9:01 and present our first report, which is the election of a municipal planning commission chairman. As per the municipal, as per our bylaw number 1344, section five, at the first meeting of the municipal planning commission, a chairman shall be elected by the vote of the majority of the members, and a chairman shall preside at the meeting of the MPC. Traditionally, the senior most staff member present for the meeting opens the floor. However, I'm doing that here today, and I would like to request council to appoint or elect a new chairperson.
Thank you, Esther. Counselor Cravie?
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. I nominate Counselor Skarson for chair.
Thank you.
I can't help but think that I was set up by Dana and Ben on this one, but yeah, it looks like it's on my shoulders now.
Any other nominations? Or maybe you're supposed to do that. Are you supposed to do that?
I guess I am supposed to do that.
Okay, sorry. Go ahead. I'm stepping out of turn here. Go ahead, Esther. Sorry about that.
Any other nominations on the floor? Okay, seeing none, we have a motion on the floor that Darcie Skarson be nominated to serve as a municipal planning commission chairman for the municipal district of Bonneville effective immediately until the next municipal election. All those in favor? Any opposed? And that motion is carried. Thank you. And as such, I will now turn over the chairing of the meeting to Counselor Skarson.
All right, well, right into it, I guess. So we need to elect a vice chair, so is there any nominations for that?
Yeah, I'd like to nominate Counselor Slipchuck.
All right, is there any other nominations? No, seeing none, so all in favor? There you go.
Thank you.
So everyone has the agenda before them.
Thanks, Esther.
Any additions or deletions to the agenda? Seeing none, all right, someone make a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
All right, all in favor? The adoption of minutes, so the minutes from October 13th, 2021.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'll not move minutes.
Okay, Counselor Cravie makes a motion to adopt the minutes, all in favor? Excellent, no business arising from minutes, no development applications or correspondence. So straight to other business, 8.1 municipal planning commission overview.
Thank you. Council, I would like to introduce Christie Poirier with our planning and development department. She's our development officer. She will be presenting this RFD to you today. As well, I just wanted to take this opportunity to point out the rest of the staff that are in this room. We have, as you know, Jolene Albert, our recording secretary. Next to her is Caitlin Adams, who's one of our clerks in the planning and development. You know, Stephanie Severin, she's our legislative coordinator, who will be here to provide procedural advice. As well, we have Robyn Bartlett, who's here on behalf of the CAO's office. As well, we have Christie Poirier, who will be presenting, as I said, she's our development officer. And as well, we have Lisa Vandenberg, and she's our planning and development clerk.
Thank you, there. Just have a question. So this is your entire staff are here then?
Normally, Lisa Folliot, who's our planning and development manager, would be here. However, she's on holidays currently.
Yep, so she's all missing.
Yes.
All right.
Yeah, Lisa left me to do this presentation for you, a little bit about the municipal planning commission. We have a little slideshow to go with what I'm going to talk about. And I guess I work the... Yeah? So the municipal government act requires a municipality to adopt a bylaw to establish a development authority and states that council may establish the municipal planning commission. Our municipal planning commission bylaw 1344 states that the MPC is to be, is to consist of all members of council and that the MPC shall be authorized as the development authority. The members at the first meeting shall elect a chairman and a vice chairperson by vote of the majority of the members. The subdivision authority is authorized to the MPC by bylaw 1123, the subdivision authority bylaw. The MPC reviews applications for subdivision as referred to, referred by the subdivision officer and issues decisions with conditions. Section 10 of the land use bylaw authorizes the commission as the development authority to issue decisions and add conditions for development permits for applications for discretionary uses. There is one exception to this application. If an application is consistent with a license or permit already approved by the province, then the development officer can issue an approval on that permit. These approvals will be brought to the MPC as information so that the commission is aware of the permits and the nature that they have been issued. The commission may also be referred to development applications for permitted uses when deemed necessary by the development officer, as well as any other planning or development matters that require review, support, or advice. Section 20 of the land use bylaw authorizes the development officer to allow variances in setbacks, building heights, and lot coverages up to a maximum of 25 percent. Any variance that exceeds that limit will be referred to the MPC for decision. Reports and recommendations for development and subdivision applications reference a variety of planning documents and provincial acts. Listed here are some of the most common planning documents that will be referred to in the reports. The municipal development plan provides a policy framework for planning and development decisions at the municipal district-wide level. The land use bylaw is the primary document utilized by planning and development staff regulating the use and development of land and buildings within the municipality. Master area structure plans are for specific areas of land or communities within the municipality requiring a more detailed policy framework for development than what is provided for in the MDP. ASPs are usually prepared for a quarter section or smaller basis and provide specific land use policies and development criteria that may require preparation of additional studies to determine the developability of lands and assess the impacts of the proposed developments. We also have intermunicipal development plans. It's a collaborative statutory document prepared by two or more participating municipalities to plan land use of mutual interest along their shared boundary. There's also a provincial plan that is referenced when completing subdivision reports, that is the Lower Athabasca Regional Plan. It is a regional plan under Alberta's land use framework, which guides future resource decisions while considering environmental, social, and economic impacts. Questions?
I just have one. So is there, do we have any IDPs in place right now?
Yes, we do. There's the one with Cold Lake, the city of Cold Lake. There is one with Bonneville. There's one with Lac Lebiche, one with St. Paul County. I think that's it. So we actually had a grant a few years back that we got these all completed with, and we are working to update the Cold Lake one right now.
All right. So any other questions? Good, thank you. Okay, well, we'll move right into confined feeding operation.
Shaun and Coral Robertson applied through the Natural Resources Conservation Board, the NRCB, to develop a confined feeding operation for 2,000 beef finishers, which also included a feedlot pen construction with a catch basin area in the pen. The NRCB accepted the application and initiated their decision process, which included notifying affected parties, reviewing for consistency with the Alberta Land Stewardship Regional Plan, consulting with the local municipality for consistency with the municipal development plan, and reviewing the Agricultural Operation Practices Act for the required minimum distance of separation from residences, water wells, and other bodies of water. The NRCB concluded that the plan was consistent with the AOPA requirements and issued permit BA 21017. Referrals, sorry. Referrals were provided to landowners within 1.5 miles of the proposed confined feeding operation. This is referred to as the affected party radius. A notice of the application was provided, advertised in the Lakeland This Week newspaper on September 21st, and the complete application was posted on the NRCB website for public viewing. A notice of decision was provided to the affected parties with directions on how to request a review of the decision with a filing deadline of November 23rd. The MD of Bonneville will not be receiving a development permit for this application as the municipal government act exempts this requirement as per section 618.2. We attached the approval from the NRCB, the decision summary, the section of the MGA that shows that this is exempt, and the Robinson confined feeding operation location map. There are no fees required by the MD and recommended action that the municipal planning commission accepts the update on the Robinson confined feeding operation NRCB permit as information.
So just a quick question. So a beef finisher, is that, is this a cow, you mean, or what?
Yes.
What is a beef finisher?
A beef finisher.
That would be like somewhere where they're feeding, to finish animals for sale, for slaughter, and they finish them and then they send them down south.
So 2,000 beef finishers is what, like, exactly what is that?
2,000 cows.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, she keeps on shaking her head no in the back there.
Can I speak? What the Robinsons are applying for is a finished feedlot. They are purchasing, sorry, they are purchasing cattle approximately 500 pounds, and they are taking them to finish weight from market, which would be 12,000, 1,200 pounds per animal. So that means that what they're doing is they're bringing in cabs, they are feeding them to their market weight, and then they're being distributed to butcher service at the end of the, of the day.
And that could be anywhere.
It can be anywhere that they choose to ship those cattle to.
All right. Hey? And then you said there was a map, but I don't, I didn't see a map here.
I didn't see a map either.
Like, where is this exactly?
This is, this is in your ward or in Donny's ward? That's in Donny's ward, right at the end, right?
Yes, that's from 26. I'm not sure either.
It's where Brunnages live, just north of Brunnages there.
So 26 west of La Corrie?
Where Gordy Paisel used to live, on the corner there, yeah, north of 55.
Sorry, the map didn't get updated on that by latest revision.
So, yeah.
Go ahead.
So did you guys do a study for the, like, who did the environmental study on this, or was there?
That is part of the NRCB's review.
Okay.
Yeah.
And they have no problem with it?
They have no problem with it.
Okay.
So this is right off the highway?
No, it's about two miles in.
Okay. I tell you, it's funny coincidence because I drove through, from Bar, I was in White Court yesterday, and I drove from Barhead to Westlock, and I don't know if you guys have, but it, there's a spot there that sounds all like this, that really kind of punches you in the face for about five miles on either side with the smell. So I don't know if that's something that is, they considered, right, as well?
Yeah, that is part of the NRCB's review, and unfortunately, the municipality has no authority on this decision.
We don't have no authority on this?
No.
CAO?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the commission. Right off the bat, NRCB approvals, we have zero input or say on what NRCB decides, particularly in confined feeding operations. I would suggest a 2,000-head feeding operation is relatively small in the big scheme. Typically, some of the big feeders in the province are 30,000, 40,000 head in a feedlot. 2,000 is a relatively small feedlot. The issue, though, that will arise for the MD at some point, and having spent lots of time in feedlot country, is there is going to be pressure on roads. If they're two miles off the pavement on our road, there is going to be, there is going to be manure hauling, there's going to be feed coming in, and that road is going to be under some pressure. So that is, that is an issue that we probably are going to have to watch and maintain. Smell, 2,000-head feedlot is probably, again, relatively small. I'm not sure on how big the, the actual containment size is, but it's, it's not a big feedlot. But if you are, if you have driven through some of the feedlot areas, you will, they do, you're putting, you're putting 2,000-head in probably, you know, a 20, 30, 40-acre parcel, and yeah, it's not going to be, it's not going to be the... At the end of the day, though, for council and for the commission and for the MD, we have nothing, we have absolutely zero say over what NRCB does in terms of, that was taken away from us about 15 years ago in, in a revision to the municipal government act way back into the early 2000s, even late 90s. So it's just, it's all for information. We don't, there's, we have absolutely no say. And of course, it does create a few, if, when you get to RMA and you do talk to some of, particularly in the southern part of the province and Lethbridge County, for example, and they have a place they called Feedlot Alley, which was, some of the biggest feedlots in the province are all centered on, on one very particular area, you will find that they have serious issues with the roads and with, and with the, the other things that come from having literally 100,000 cattle in a, you know, in two-quarter section area, so...
So would they be, like, will they be under the same rules for road restrictions, like road bans and all that, or?
We're certainly going to have to talk about it. The problem is that we often, and it's kind of the policy right now, is ag producers are not held to the same standard for roads as industry is. And so the feedlots will always argue that they're ag, no different than a farmer hauling a superbe of grain out or hauling a superbe of grain, of seed in, or even, you know, a local farmer with a few loads of manure that they're spreading on their, on their fields. The problem with the big feedlots is they, they believe that they are ag, and that's going to be at some point. Now, I don't believe 2,000-head cattle is going to create a ton of issues. However, if you get more feedlots and/or this feedlot grows to be significantly bigger, 5,000-head and up, you will see significant pressure on the roads, and council at that point would have to determine as to whether or not they are truly an ag or are they going to be held. But right now, if you were to put any kind of restriction on them on road use, they'll scream that, well, we're just, we're, we're an ag producer, you, you can't, you can't hold up an ag producer. And we do kind of separate ag producers in terms of how we deal with them on the roads than we do from, from industry. I can tell you, for example, in Rockyview County, we had, we had one of the biggest feedlots in central Alberta, and it was a long-term issue. We ended up having to put, hold security from them, had to have them sign road use agreements. They had a feedlot that had about 40,000 head of cattle in it, and it's not just the feed and stuff coming in, but the manure hauling, and when they're hauling manure, anybody who's familiar with large feedlot manure hauling, they're not hauling manure with, they're not going in the back of a body job, five or 10-ton truck. They're hauling manure and major piece of equipment to do major damage to the roads. So that will be something that council will have to keep an eye on over the next couple of years, and, and us on the roadside, is how are these, how are the feedlots impacting our road network, because they certainly will.
All right, so, sorry, I have one question. Is this, is there something here already, or this isn't just a new operation? Like, what do they got going on there right now?
It's new.
Oh, it's all brand new?
Yeah.
So they're not, there's no farm in there, nothing?
There is a farm there, but the fellow passed away, and this guy took over a small farm.
Okay.
And now he's, it's, it's in a good location, it's, it's away from people.
Okay.
It's like the river is on one side of it, like about a mile and a half or two miles away, the river that way, and then it's all, it's all, you know, all north, it's all bush to the north, and so it's probably a good location to have a feedlot that doesn't impact the people in the area.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So if they want to have more than 2,000-head, they would have to reapply?
Typically, yes. They're, when they do an application, when anybody does an application NRCB, they have to indicate the size and scope of the operation, and then given the size and scope of the operation NRCB, they probably, I'm not completely familiar with the process, but they likely have triggers, 2,000-head means you have to do this, 5,000-head means you have to do that, 10,000-head means you have to do this. So there will be, they would likely have to apply for an expansion to the feedlot. My guess is there is probably some give and take on the 2,000 number, probably a 10%-ish number, but if they wanted to increase that to a 5,000-head feedlot, yes, that would be, that would be an addition and likely another application to expand the current feedlot.
Good.
And Darcy, sorry.
Go ahead.
And Darcy, many farms in the MD, they can, they have capacity for 1,000-head for the winter, so there's lots of farms that have that, that, so...
Good.
And, you know...
Okay, so is there any other questions? So maybe a motion for acceptance of information? Counselor Crick, anyone, everyone approve? Good, thank you for that. Onto subdivision applica-
Mr. Chair, sorry. I just have a question.
Sorry, I spoke, I turned the door.
Sorry, I had made an error earlier when I was introducing all of our staff. Fortunately, I need to still read some job descriptions here. Our second development officer is Lisa Vandenberg. She's not a clerk. She's been with us now, as of tomorrow, six years, and she started off as a clerk, and she is now one of our development officers, and she's in charge of all of our, she processes all of our permitted use for buildings and development permits, and she also manages the subdivision applications as per the legislation. So just a little bit of clarification between what Lisa does and what Christie does is, alternatively, Christie handles more the legislation and the enforcement side and the education to, to residents, whereas Lisa is more the hands-on on the actual applications that come through. Okay? Thank you. Sorry for the confusion.
Okay. Subdivision applications, 9.1.
Can I call you Lisa?
Good morning.
Good morning.
All right, subdivision application 2021-S-016. I will get the location map brought up, please. Thank you. This application proposes to subdivide one 7.5-acre parcel out of a previously unsubdivided quarter section as shown on attached map as appendix A. Notification of the proposed subdivision was mailed to referral agencies and adjacent landowners with a deadline of September 28th, 2021, to submit concerns to be considered at the November 8th, 2021 municipal planning commission meeting. No concerns have been received regarding this application. For more detailed information on this application request, we are going to go to appendix B. This application proposes to subdivide one 7.5-acre parcel from a previously unsubdivided agricultural quarter section. The subject site is located southwest of La Corrie, approximately 1.5 miles south of Township Road 630 on Range Road 646. We may need the maps up, sorry, Jolene. It's all new, we're learning. The applicant is Explorer Inc., and on behalf of the owner, Steve Kalinsky. This application meets all of the conditions of the municipal government act, subdivision and development regulations, the Lower Athabasca Regional Plan, municipal development plan, and the land use bylaw. Therefore, we recommend it be approved with the following conditions: legal physical access to proposed parcel and remnant; if registered by plan of survey, a 17-foot strip of land will be required along the west frontage to be registered by separate road plan for future road widening; or if registered by descriptive plan, the owner would enter into a land acquisition agreement for a 17-strip along that west line. Real property report will be required as there is an existing yard site there. There is an existing sewage disposal, and it must comply with the Alberta Safety Codes Act and the Province of Alberta Public Health Act, and the final taxes to be paid in full. Just a note for you gentlemen, there is a suspended site, well site, that is approximately 30, or 300 meters northeast of the proposed site, which will have no impact upon the subdivision itself.
All right, thank you. Jeez, when I look at that map, all I see is Slipchuck and Kalinsky up there.
Yeah.
So is there any questions or motions that we want to make?
I'll make the motion to approve this application.
Motion to approve, is there any discussion? All right, all in favor? Carried. Thank you. Off to 9.2.
Our second subdivision application is subdivision 2021-S-017. This application to, this application proposes to subdivide one 10-acre parcel from a previously unsubdivided agricultural quarter section as shown on the attached map as appendix A. Notification of the proposed subdivision was mailed to referral agencies and adjacent landowners with a deadline of October 7th, 2021, to submit concerns to be considered at the November 8th, 2021 municipal planning commission meeting. No concerns have been received regarding this application. The subject site is located northeast of Glendon, approximately 2.5 miles north on Highway 660 on Range Road 485. The applicant is John Mustard. The owners are Linda, John, and Carla Mustard. Information for you gentlemen, there is a suspended site approximately 570 meters southeast of the proposed parcel, which will have no impact upon the subdivision process.
It's, it's, sorry, it's Range Road 483, not 485.
Oh, sorry. Okay, and this application meets all conditions of municipal government act, subdivision and development regulations, the Lower Athabasca Regional Plan, municipal development plan, the land use bylaw, and therefore, we recommend it be approved with the following conditions: legal and physical access to proposed parcel and remnant; if registered by plan of survey, a 17-foot strip along the west, entire west frontage to be registered by separate road plan for future road widening; or if registered by descriptive plan, the owner enter into a land acquisition agreement for 17-strip, 17-foot strip of land along the entire west frontage. Real property report will be required as there are some outbuildings within the parameters, and taxes to be paid in full.
So is that just, looks like just they got their house there, and they just want to?
There is no house there at this time, there are just outbuildings.
Oh, okay.
So what they're planning on doing is subdividing out the original homestead and possibly, like, constructing a home on there. The rest of the land will be used for agricultural purposes.
All right. So is there any questions or motions? Mike?
I'll make a motion to approve the subdivision.
All right, is there any discussion? No? All in favor? Easy.
Thank you, gentlemen.
So, doesn't look like any subdivision extension requests. So next meeting date, so we typically meet the second Tuesday of every month, right? So December 14th at 9:00 AM? Are we switching to 9:00 AM? All right. Any other questions? Yes?
I just want to say you did a great job.
Why, thank you very much. Any other motions?
No, just excellent job, Counselor Skarson.
Oh, thanks again. Yes, thank you. Anyone else want to say what a great job I did? Okay, thank you.
I wanted to mention the staff, too, and they did a great job.
Oh, okay. Staff, excellent work. Excellent work by everybody. There you go.
Great, great job, Chair.
Great, it's a great way to start a Monday morning. There you go. All right, is there a motion to adjourn? From Counselor Crick, all right, all in favor? a motion to adjourn from Counselor Rick? All right, all in favor? Good, thank you.